Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Legions led by Councilwoman Andrea Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Present.
President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We will now begin tonight's meeting with one of two special announcements and presentations that we have. First off is going to be our Parks and Recreation Director, Director Kyle Mulligan.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Legions led by Councilwoman Andrea Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Present.
President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We will now begin tonight's meeting with one of two special announcements and presentations that we have. First off is going to be our Parks and Recreation Director, Director Kyle Mulligan.
Good evening, City Council and the residents of Westland. I'm here tonight with two updates regarding the Parks and Recreation Department. First, starting on January 9th for four consecutive Thursdays, the winter drawing and painting classes are returning to City Hall. The kids' class for ages five to 12 runs 4:30 to 5:30, and the adult class runs 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. All materials are included in this registration cost, and the dates for this program runs Thursday, January 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th. We also have an adult Tai Chi for beginners starting Wednesday, January 22nd. This will be an eight-week program, meeting every Wednesday morning here at City Hall from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30, January 22nd through March 12th. Also, I just wanted to let everybody know, the Farmers and Artisans Market and all Pavilion Rentals between Memorial Day and Labor Day will be set to open to the public on Friday, January 3rd. So if you're interested in renting out park areas for graduation parties or any other function, please reach out to us or go to the Recreation Portal for more information. Secondly, I come here tonight, I wanted to update the public on the progress of the Westland Parks and Recreation Five-Year Master Plan. Through a fall of engagement with residents, community leaders, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, we have created the draft for the 2025 to 2029 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We are currently in the 30-day public review period where residents are able to comment and provide their thoughts, ideas, and suggestions. The feedback we receive is essential in shaping the future of our parks and ensuring that they meet the needs and aspirations for the Westland community. Now through January 9th, 2025, the draft Parks and Recreation Plan can be found under the "Westland Spotlight" section on the cityofwestland.com. Hard copies have also been placed at City Hall, Jefferson Barnes, the Westland Library, and the Friendship Center. Comments can be sent directly to me and the city's Parks Department. The more feedback we receive, the stronger this plan will be. Please email me directly with feedback and comments at kmulligan@cityofwestland.com. I'd like to thank the city council, the mayor's office, the McKenna team, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Council for all of their input so far this season, or this process. There's a lot more coming in 2025, so please be sure to check out the city's Recreation Portal at cityofwestland.com or call us at 734-722-7620. My email one last time for those Master Plan comments is kmulligan@cityofwestland.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mulligan. We'll now have a very special announcement and presentation from our Council President Pro Tem, Melissa Sampe.
Now through January 9th, 2025, the draft Parks and Recreation Plan can be found under the "Westland Spotlight" section on the cityofwestland.com. Hard copies have also been placed at City Hall, Jefferson Barnes, the Westland Library, and the Friendship Center. Comments can be sent directly to me and the city's Parks Department. The more feedback we receive, the stronger this plan will be. Please email me directly with feedback and comments at kmulligan@cityofwestland.com. I'd like to thank the city council, the mayor's office, the McKenna team, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Council for all of their input so far this season, or this process. There's a lot more coming in 2025, so please be sure to check out the city's Recreation Portal at cityofwestland.com or call us at 734-722-7620. My email one last time for those Master Plan comments is kmulligan@cityofwestland.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mulligan. We'll now have a very special announcement and presentation from our Council President Pro Tem, Melissa Sampe.
No audio? Okay, audio. Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Today's a special meeting because, as you may hear me talk about this at the last several meetings, the Westland Goodfellows is going to be honoring some of our sponsors today. So, before we get started, I just have a short recap video of the sponsors that sponsored the program this year. Perhaps they wouldn't be able to attend, which is totally fine, but I wanted to show everyone what we did with your funds and your sponsorship dollars and just all the love that has been donated to the Westland Goodfellows. So I'm gonna play the short video. Well, we're here with one of our board members and former mayor, Michael Londo. And why don't you tell us a little bit more about the sponsors for this year? We had an enormous amount of support, so maybe you could fill us in.
How much time do you got? Because it's a long, long, lengthy list. We had so many donors, there's a lot of, you know, what we consider heavy hitters, but, you know, a lot of the silent donors as well. I know you guys sent out, or we sent out a mailer to all the Westland residents. We have a lot of people that donate. Some want to be mentioned and some don't sometimes. But we did have some big sponsors. Obviously, the city's council, Westland City Council, donated $10,000 using American Rescue Plan Act funds, federal funding. So that's a great use of those dollars, I believe. $5,000 from Eloise Asylum. Eloise is a great property here in Westland, they do a lot of great events.
They're here today?
They're here today, helping out. John Hambrik's here today as well, helping out with five, they gave us $5,000 towards that as well. Vitagary Contractors, another great contractor here in the city of Westland. When you see those large modern main breaks, if the city of Westland's not on the call, Vitagary, I'm sure, is on the call doing it. So they graciously donated $5,000 as well. I'm looking at my cheat sheet over here. The Rowry Club, who's another great organization in the community, $2,500. So, again, a lengthy list, a lot of $1,000 donors, $250 donors, $500 donors, but every dollar counts and really helps ensure no child goes out at Christmas, which is what really matters here.
Absolutely. So, I'm back again. I'm actually back with one of our board members, John Adamsak, and a first-time volunteer with Goodfellows, Gina. So, we are in the process of packing right now. I know it's overwhelming. Look, you even came out from your packing adventure. Why don't, I don't know who wants to take this. Maybe tell us a little bit more about what you guys saw today, what you're experiencing, people you met.
Well, this is obviously very big. We're very excited to be a part of this program. John and I, a few years ago, started in helping families online Facebook group, and we get anywhere from three to 11 families per year. And so this is just much bigger, and we're helping so many more kids, and this is just a great experience. And thank you so much for having us.
Absolutely.
I've been in the light system for sixteen years, round of five, and I came into it this year just to kind of help the organization out. I feel really blessed, so I want you guys to just enjoy it. This is hope to a lot of families. When you go through the applications, we read the stories. A lot of these families are in hardship, they're dealing with mental illnesses or physical illnesses, and this is their hope for Christmas. We started out the season probably with about 200 children, like, starting to come in.
Program?
Yeah. We're now at 400 children.
We've done 400 children, it's amazing. We've got 200 of them adopted, and then about 200 in regular program, so. And just Melissa, she's done so much to help us this year. It has been, for Melissa, next year would have been our last year, because we are running out of money. So Melissa came in, and she, you know, got all the donations, and she's been amazing.
Hi, everyone, it's Melissa Sampe. I am the co-Vice President of Westland Goodfellows and a city councilwoman here in the city of Westland. Today is our packing and distribution day is tomorrow. So we're getting ready for our big event, which is gonna take place tomorrow. But today is super exciting, because we are packing the bags. I am here with Westland Mayor Kevin Coleman, who came out to support the cause. So thank you, Mayor Coleman, for coming out. What did you see today?
Well, you have, we got quite an army in here. And I want to give you credit, because you really organized this and took the lead and made sure that this remained a viable cause in the city. There's dozens of people in there packing up toys for kids of all ages. I know the theme is "No Child Without a Christmas." Westland Goodfellows is a decades-long, I think, over 50, 60-year history in the city to support families and people in need. So this is just awesome. I came in today and I was blown away, so great, great work.
Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, we had a lot of volunteers today. So there was probably, I would say, 50 or 60 people behind us getting everything ready for the packing of the bags. So, a wish list is given to us by the families. What we do with our volunteers is they try to match the wish list in the best way possible for them, so they have a Christmas. So, again, Mayor Coleman, I want to thank you for coming out. It was such a great event today, and is there anything else that you want to share?
Well, I just, again, thanks for all you do. And as mayor, I'm gonna make sure the city continues to support the Goodfellows. It was great to see a couple of the council members here, some of the city staff are here. So, hey, great job. Let's keep up the great work, everybody.
The Goodfellows have been around about 60 years, and they started back with the newspaper boys. And back in the day, they would just get a newspaper. Well, the newspaper boys would go out and they would, you know, like, raise funds. And I know each child, they got crayon book, crayons, toothbrush, toothpaste, and a toy. That's all they got. Well, over the years, it's evolved into the program we have now, and we're able to do a lot more for the families because of generous people that donate, you know, and help and volunteers. And without all of that, we wouldn't have Goodfellows today. This is an amazing program this year. We have 200 kids we adopted out, and we got 200 kids in, about 200 kids in regular program, which is amazing. And it just feels good that, you know, that we're able to provide Christmas for 400 kids. Otherwise, they wouldn't have a Christmas this year.
So that was a recap. I would like to bring up our board members to move forward with the presentation. So any of our board members that are here, feel free to come up. Don't be shy. So we have my other partner in crime, Rhonda Nestor, who is one of our co-presidents this year. We also have our Technology Director, Dennis Knight. And we also have our Treasurer, Heather Clear. So, before we get started, I know that you guys have worked really hard for 16 years, 16 years and five years. They've not once asked for anything. This program, just to give you guys a background, this is something that they do year-round. This is a volunteer, very much a volunteer. There's no give-back but joy for the Goodfellows. And what happens with your role is Rhonda goes through the applications, Rhonda follows up with the calls, Rhonda makes sure that families, even in an emergency situation, have what they need. Dennis is there to troubleshoot anything we need. And Heather's here to make sure, same thing, but also to make sure financially that we're on track and that we can continue. So this year, we had a fantastic year. We had about 61,000 that was raised, which was huge. We can clap. And the police, the Westland Police Department, which we're gonna honor here in a second, they hosted their eighth annual stuff a swat car. And they, they do this year over year, they don't ask for anything. They have mire, they have music, they have just the support of the community. So we want to thank you guys here in a minute, but eight years in running. So thank you so much. We'll give you guys a round of applause. So the board members that are here, the city of Westland wants to recognize you. I want to read this, and I'll just insert, you can insert your name, but, "Whereas Heather," I know Donna's not here, "Rhonda and Dennis, this has been dedicated, they've been a dedicated volunteer with the Westland Goodfellows for 16 years, five years, 16, 16, and selfishly serving the children of Westland. Through their unwavering commitment, they have played an instrumental role in ensuring that thousands of children in our community experience the joy of Christmas, even during difficult circumstances. They have generously given their time, energy, and passion to various areas within the Westland Goodfellow program, making them a massive asset in the success of the program. Their leadership, compassion have inspired fellow volunteers and the community at large, embodying the spirit and giving the important story," this is so small on my phone, "the importance of helping those in need. Your contributions have not only made a profound impact on the lives of countless children, but also have fostered a sense of hope and joy during the holiday season. Therefore, on this day," go ahead, Council President, if you want to come down too, and everyone else on council, "the city council, Mike McDermott, our council president, and the city council, members of the city council and the clerk, do hereby honor each of you for your exceptional service and unwavering dedication to the children of Westland through the Westland Goodfellows program." So, we have, if you guys wouldn't mind, we have to reprint, we have to print our certificates, sorry. We had a mix-up earlier, but I'm gonna have you hold this. We do have your certificates, we're gonna get them to you, but I just wanted to read our proclamation.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So before we get into the awards, I'm gonna just pass the mic if anyone wants to say anything.
Thank you very much, Melissa, for all your efforts this year. I'm not sure where we'd be headed if it weren't for someone inside the city with your great Rolodex and your, you know, winning spirit of bending arms and ears to gain us some footing in our fundraising efforts. I've been very nervous the last few years, because the need has continued to increase. And with this amount of money, we were able to give extra funding in our food program this year and our toy program. So, I can't thank you enough for those efforts. It's been great 16 years, and it's been difficult 16 years. It's the best and the worst when you're experiencing it with families, because you feel such compassion for them. But I'm excited for the new involvement and the new people that we have joining the organization with fresh ideas and fresh energy. Thank you.
Okay, well, again, I want to, what Heather said about, you know, the fund, the funding that she provided for us this year. Like Heather said, we don't know where we would be, you know, how much longer we would be able to do this. And it was very upsetting, because, you know, there's such a need, and there's so many families that struggle out there, and so many kids. And if it wasn't for the Goodfellows, they wouldn't have a Christmas. So, that's what, that's what makes you keep going. You know, makes you want to keep going, because it does get tough. It gets, it's a lot of work. You know, like Heather said, it's rewarding, but it's also hard, too. But just know that that need is out there, is that drive is what keeps you going. So, thank you, Melissa, for everything.
He said, "No, thank you." So, as we talked about, we serviced over 400 children. Up until yesterday, we had emergency visits to Jefferson Barnes from families that had emergency situations. So, we try not to turn anyone away. Typically, if they're declined, it's just because they don't live in our city. So, you know, we're really focused on Westland families, and that's, that's the heart of this program. So what we're gonna do right now is I have a list of our sponsors. So, we're gonna start with the sponsors that, anyone that was 500 and below. So we have the Candy Cane sponsors. And I'm gonna just call you guys up one by one, if that's okay, and then we'll get a group picture. So, DT Energy could not be here, but they were a sponsor. The Smith Law Firm. Sorry, we have a lot of them. Yes. Thank you. We also had the Westland Democratic Club. Mr. Warren, if you want to come up. Thank you. We also have National Block. I don't know if anyone's here from National Block. Nope. OHM Advisors. See, Andrew here. Thank you, Council President. And then, we also have Plant Moran. Oh, I see Keith here. And then, we also, I don't know if anyone from Rockies of Northville is here? Nope, that's okay. And then, the Westland Professional Firefighters, they came in last minute. I just wanted to recognize them as well. They came in last minute, did an emergency family that I asked them to do, I think it was Saturday or Sunday, so I just want to thank them. But if you guys want to come up, I don't know, Brian and Dave, if you want to come up? Thank you. Okay, so these are our sponsors that generously donated $500 and, and below. So I just want to give them a nice round of applause, please. We're gonna do a quick picture. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next group we're gonna bring up is the Joyful Giving sponsors. So, Sole Construction, if there's anyone here from Sole. All right. Wayne Westland Federal Credit Union. No, that's okay. PPM Tree Company. Well, we do have someone, awesome. So you get something a little fancy. There's a lot of them up here, sorry. They are labeled, thank you. And then Hennessy Engineers. Awesome, thank you. All right, so these are the individuals that donated, oh, no, I'm sorry, Daniel South. Nope. And then Boise. Boise Cascade. I put you guys in a different bucket, so. Boise. Vitagary, no. Thank you. All right, so we want to give them a big round of applause? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so the next group that I'm gonna bring up is, actually, it's an in-kind sponsor. They hosted a networking event. It was Coffee with a Cause. So I'm gonna bring up Wesley and Livonia Chamber. So I think Sheri's here from the Chamber. Just in recognition for, for the event that you held, we wanted just to honor you and thank you just for bringing people together. We, we had a toy collection event at the Chamber, which is a new partnership for us. for us. Thank you. The next group is our Holiday Cheer, so they donated $2,500 and above, so I think I'm gonna bring up Kyle Mulligan for the Westland Rotary Club. And then, I don't know if Brandon Kassab is here, he donated $2,500 as well, but I think he had a Christmas program, so he said he was gonna try to make it. Thank you. The next group was our Christmas Star sponsors, we have quite a few in this group, so I am going to see if there's anyone from Izaki here? No? It's a busy time of the year, but they did, they actually, Izaki donated, how many families? Forty-seven families. So, they ended up taking the families and their wish lists, and they do it year over year, so I'm not sure, how many years is it?
Oh, gosh, probably at least 10 years.
Yeah, so this year, we had a need, and they, they answered the call. So, next, we have Eloise, so I saw John, John Hambrik is here, John also volunteered at our packing event and brought his daughters, so we wanna recognize John, thank you. And then, we have Bitigary Contractors. And then, Congresswoman Rashida Talib actually took, how many families?
I think it was at least 10 families.
10 families, so I wanna bring up individuals from Rashida, I think I see Larissa and Leila Taha. So we have an award to share with Congresswoman. And thank you so much to this group, too, that answered the call, like I said, John was there, I know that we were in very close contact with Rashida Talib's office, and you guys continue to take more and more and more, so I know that, I'm not sure who went shopping, was it, okay, Rashida did, too, but they personally delivered, I know you guys had a good time, so we appreciate it, and thank you, too, Bitigary, for jumping in, you guys, I think, are first-time sponsors, so we appreciate it. We're gonna take a quick picture. So the next group is our $10,000 North Pole sponsor, so the Wesleyan Police Department, I don't know what gang wants to come up, but we wanna recognize you, Brandon, Cameron, Kaylee, yeah? Chief? So we're gonna just do a quick picture with them, with them, if that's okay? The Stuff a Squad Car event was extremely cold, very cold that day, it actually was so cold that it was snowing and got the toys wet, so then we had to come back and wipe everything down, and we got back to our office, but I wanna thank the Wesleyan Police Department for the 8th Annual Stuff a Squad Car, you guys continue to answer the call, you guys are very much appreciated for families, I know that the Wesleyan Fire Department and the Police Department did their Hero Shopping Day at Meyer, but we look forward to continuing partnership with you guys, so thank you so much. The next one is the Aldani Family Foundation, they actually reached out to Congresswoman Talib, we made the connection, we shared a little bit more with what we do, and they donated $10,000. They do not live in the state of Michigan, so they donated it with no questions asked after we talked, so I just wanna recognize them and Congresswoman Talib for making that connection with us. Lastly, I wanna thank my colleagues who can come down, if you guys would may. No, I, whoever wants to accept the award on behalf of the City Council, okay, Council President. This was something that was brought up, it was used with American Rescue dollars, and I wanna thank my colleagues for supporting this because it helped fill the gaps, as the team stated, we were able to give a larger food voucher, which is very much needed with the cost of groceries, and they also got a Meyer gift card, so that kind of filled in the gap, so I just wanna thank my colleagues, everyone who supported, all right, they're gonna fill in, everyone that supported this.
I wanna see how far back he can lean.
So that's it for our sponsors, we do have a few others that unfortunately were unable to be here. One thing before I go, I wanted to thank our businesses, I'm just gonna read them off really quickly, oh, I'm just not going to, because the paper's not in here. We had several businesses in the city of Westland that hosted box drop-offs, I think we probably had more than ever, would you say?
Thirteen boxes out? Yeah, 13.
So there was local businesses that ended up supporting, so on our weslandgoodfellows.org page, there is a box drop-off list, so feel free to thank them as well, but I wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight, that ends our presentation, but again, I wish everyone a happy holidays, and we will be back next year.
All right, well, thank you very much for that, and thank you again to the Westland Goodfellows and all the great people who made this a huge success, and everybody who donated, thank you. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public, this section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your Westland City Council. With regards to items on the agenda, is there anyone on my right wishing to speak? Anyone on my left wishing to speak? Mr. Warren, yes?
Good evening. Under the vouchers, page 15 and 17, under the street lighting fund, now, is this lighting assessment just for this one year, or is it a continuous lighting assessment for the Lacy Drive folks? Because I know there was some discussion that we may have paid, we, council, we had some discussions about paying, paying for that lighting out of the Opera Funds and other kinds of funds, but I see it comes up as an assessment now, so I'm just, just to see what these citizens have to pay for in regards to the lighting, whether it's a continuous or just a one-time assessment, starting off, thank you.
Thank you. Director Smith, if you wanted to.
Yes, through the chair, this was a special street lighting assessment?
Steve, we'll actually get you at the end, sorry, since we're not gonna get it here, we'll get you at the end and answer it.
Gotcha.
The administration comments?
During the vouchers.
During the vouchers, yep, we can do it then. Mr. Warren, we'll get you an answer when the vouchers come up, we'll direct a comment to Director Smith to get you an answer on that. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on tonight's business agenda? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, there is support from Councilwoman Rakowski, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to consent calendar? Yes, Pro Tem?
Thank you, thank you so much, Council President, so I am making a motion to take Consent Calendar Item C and move it to New Business for Discussion.
There's a motion to move Consent Calendar Item C to New Business, Item 1A, is there support? Motion by Pro Tem Sampe, support by Councilman Hart, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
This would be to move Item C to New Business 2A. Councilwoman Baumann. Councilman Hart. Councilman Hornbuckle. Councilwoman Rakowski. Councilman Wishart. Pro Tem Sampe. President McDermott. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, back to the original motion, are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Any additional changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes as amended.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items, minutes of the regular meeting held December 2, 2024, approval of bid for tree cutting and stump removal, administration recommended split awarding this contract to PPM Tree Service and Arbor Care LLC as the city's primary tree cutting contractor, and JNC Outdoor Services Incorporated as a secondary contractor. Term of the contract shall be for a three-year period commencing immediately with a two-year extension option per the unit pricing provided. Approval of the golf course maintenance service contract rate adjustment for the 2025 season, term of the extension should be for a period of one year. Adoption of the 2025 Annual Performance Resolution between the City of Westland and the Michigan Department of Transportation to construct, operate, and/or use the state highway right-of-way area on roads that are under the state's jurisdiction within the city of Westland. Public Services Director, Neighborhood Services Director, Superintendent of Water, the Mayor and/or City Clerk will apply to MDOT for the necessary permit to work within the state highway right-of-way on behalf of the city. Adoption of prepared, I'm sorry, proposed resolution approving the Wayne County Annual Permit A25128, authorizing the City of Westland to apply to the County of Wayne Department of Public Service Engineering Division Permit Office for permits to conduct emergency repairs, annual maintenance work, and for other purposes on local and county roads located entirely within the boundaries of Westland as needed from time to time to maintain the roads in a condition reasonably safe and convenient for public travel. Public Services Director, Neighborhood Services Director, Superintendent of Water, the Mayor and/or City Clerk will apply to the County of Wayne Department of Public Services Engineering Division Permit Office for the necessary permits to work within the county road-of-way on local roads on behalf of the city. Approval of request from the Westland Community Foundation to waive the administrative fees for the utilization of Westland City Hall to hold their annual Taste of Christmas event on July 25, 2025, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. due to budgetary restrictions. The nonprofit package deal for the full grand ballroom and community room is $750. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval to extend the payment of 2024 winter taxes without additional penalty until February 28, 2025. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle, is there any questions from the maker?
Yes, Council President, thank you, I would like to read, discuss Mr. Warren's concerns on the VOD 861 street lighting for those individuals living in Lacy, and have his question answered through the chair to Mr. Smith.
Director Smith?
Thank you, through the chair, to Mr. Warren, this was a special district for the street lighting, it's separate than the major local street lighting district, this was for a set period of time for the special assessment district, and when it was paid off, we did an internal audit on it and found there were overpayments, so the homeowners were refunding the overpayments, so that's what, that's what's on, what you see on the voucher list, so, some of the amounts would be a little less than the others, it's either because they went in the house all of the years, but as you can see, most of them are the same, so that's, they lived in the house for all the, all the time during the special assessment, just, hope that helps.
Thank you, Director Smith, and just for a point of clarification for those in the audience and those at home who might not quite know what the vouchers are, the vouchers are the outgoing, essentially the checks from the city to outside sources, so that also indicates that those people are receiving that money, so just wanted that point of clarification, because we use that word, and some folks may not know what we're doing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any questions from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
Moving to unfinished business, Item 1, adoption of prepared resolution to authorize application to the State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission for a one-day liquor license on behalf of the Esqot Youth Development Programs fundraising event to be held at the Jefferson Barnes Community Center, January 25, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., this item had been postponed December 2, 2024.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski, and if the representative from Esqot would like to come up to just kinda talk a little bit about the program and what this will be used for.
Thank you, Council President, the event is going to be held January 25, 2025, it is the 10-year anniversary of the program, and we hope to use the event to raise funds to continue the operation of the program and hopefully expand some of our services.
Okay, wonderful, and were there any questions from the maker? Any questions from the supporter?
Thank you, Council President, I don't so much, just have a question, is, I wanted to clarify why it had been postponed previously, and that was because the council, that we had our packet, some of the questions that we had weren't able to be answered at the time, so going back, at the end of the meeting, city attorneys clarified those questions, and unfortunately, we were past the opportunity to vote on it because the motion had been made to postpone it until this meeting, so, you know, I think we've all been great supporters of Esqot in the past, and I just wanted to offer that bit of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
New Business, Item 2, request for City Council to enter into a closed study session on January 6, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to consult with legal counsel in connection with Holvis versus City of Westland, and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state law pursuant to MCL 15268E and H.
Roll call.
Who, who supported it?
It was from Councilman Hart, he made the motion, and then, Lane, Councilman Hornbuckle supported it.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann. Councilman Hart. Councilman Hornbuckle. Councilwoman Rakowski. Councilman Wishart. Pro Tem Sampe. President McDermott. Motion passes unanimously. New Business, Item 2A, formerly known as Consent Item C, approval of master services agreement with Lexipol- Approval of Master Services Agreement with Lexipol for grant services for all city departments. Term of this service agreement shall be for a two-year period commencing immediately in the amount of $14,250 per contracted year.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
Is there support?
Support.
There's a motion by Pro Tem Sampey, support by Councilman Hart. Director Ayoub, did you have anything on this?
I believe this is my item.
Oh, it says Ayoub planning. So you have nothing to present or anything on this?
Are we doing?
Oh, it's running.
I'm running, I'm sorry. That's my bad, my fault. Sorry, Mo, we'll get you next. Sorry. Is there any, I apologize for that mix-up here. I read the wrong item on the agenda. Is there any discussion for the maker?
Yes, that's me.
Yes.
Thank you so much. So I have a question through the chair to Director Smith. Based on what I was reviewing, and actually Director Smith and myself talked. So the grant team will be writing grants for all of the city, and you know, this is quite, quite a different price than what we had had before. So with that being said, are we getting charged, through the chair? Are we getting charged a percentage? Are we getting charged additional amounts based on grant approval? Or is this just a set rate per contracted year of $14,250?
So through the chair, that is right. The amount is $14,250. There will be no additional charges, depending on whether they're successful in getting grants or not. And actually, I think the police chief can help answer that question as well, if he could.
Yes, through the chair. So when Nosreni Strategies left the city, they give a 30-day notice in July. We have three grants at the police department right now. So we quickly assembled the team, me, Deputy Chief Wilkie, and Lieutenant Sleep who's here today. We also reached out to the fire chief, and he agreed to add, jump onto our team. So I run the Burn Justice Grant now, which is the behavioral health clinician. Deputy Chief Wilkie's running the JAG grant, and then Lieutenant Sleep's working the Bullet Fest Program grant. And also, we want to start looking for more grant opportunities. He did some immediate research. We already have Lexipol for other subscriptions. It's a great product. It seeks out grants for us, and it's also like a training thing. If we find a grant we want, we can also submit it to them for review and process. They have a lot more greater experience with that and success rate. So really using it as like a training tool, but also for the first year, we want to get to jump off. We're going to give them some ideas that we want, such as you'll hear in the near future, we want. We need, well, we have a need for preparatives for both police and fire. And when you combine it like that, it opens up way more doors for those opportunities, because the money's out there, we just got to find it. So Lexipol helped us find it, and then we'll use it for other ones. So kind of get trainings that moving forward after this subscription, we'll be comfortable with an experienced team, and we'll be moving forward with police and fire. On the all-city side, there is other things. So if we say, hey, we're good with what we learned, but we also want to get Parks and Rec a grant, anybody, any department can have access to this subscription. So it is just a great resource to have.
Thanks, Chief, for clarification. I don't know too much about that service. So the reason why I moved it is just so we can get a little explanation on what they are. It sounds like it's a subscription service. So is it like a database of grant opportunities? And do they give you just general grant language that you use to apply? Do you still have to write it?
There will be some we can, but there's, Lieutenant Sleep, could I speak to a little bit more on what the additional offer is, if you would like to come up to the podium?
Yeah, that'd be okay. Thanks.
Also, he's kind of taking the lead on this new grant team, so he's been tasked with that. He's doing a great job digging into it. That's where he came up with this Lexipol.
Thanks, Chief. So we actually get a number of services with this. They have their own program in which we will have a certain amount of subscribers that can go onto this program to search for grants for whatever our needs would be. And we would have an unlimited access to that while the contract goes on. Then we have a certain amount of grants that they will write for us. They will use their contact to go directly with us, whichever person in the department, whether it's police, fire, Parks and Rec, whoever is the lead there to access information that they need to fill out the grant. But for those contracted grants, they will completely fill it out. We just have to provide them with some information. And then they'll coach us through, on the backend, after an award, on what we need to report, when we need to report it. And then on top of that, there's also sort of a training coaching aspect that the chief mentioned, that they are, we can submit grants that we wrote to them, and they will give us their feedback or proofread it, if you will, to help increase our chances of being awarded on grants when we need them.
Gotcha. So is there, Lieutenant Sleep, is there a number of grants that you can submit? Or is it unlimited access to grants, and there's no limited number?
So included in this contract, there are, there's three grants a year that they will write for us.
Okay.
And then there are six grants a year that they will proofread or look over for us, give us the proper language in order to improve our success. We could always, for an additional fee, we could always go and ask them to do another grant for us, but we would have to negotiate those prices.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was getting at. Just the number of grants that we have access to is probably unlimited, but if you want them to write and you want them to proofread, there's an additional cost, like a probably a specific cost per grant over what is allotted, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
All set? Anything from the supporter?
I think the maker addressed all the questions.
Okay. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yeah, thank you. As, some of the questions are a little bit the same. In a past life, I was actually a grant writer and used this in a university centers or setting, excuse me. The question that I have, you know, and I know, I see a significant difference in the dollars, and we touched on that they're not actually grant writers. So, you know, here's three grants a year that would be written, six that would be proofed or improved. So this question would go through the chair to Mr. Smith. In the, you know, per annum, how many grants do we tend to receive as a city successfully?
I mean, there's a number of grants that we receive annually. Some departments actually write their own. We have the insurance grants called the RAP grants. Those are all handled internally. NIT writes a lot of those themselves. So there's a lot of different types of grants out there. And some of them, like I said, are done by the departments themselves, where they don't need the assistance. But in the police and fire field, there are, there are the higher dollar number of grants out there where this service would come in very handy.
Yeah, exactly. The secondary question that I would have, you know, perhaps through the chair to the chief that you could answer. You know, we successfully were able to secure the JAG grant in the police department, and we were awarded a second safer grant in the fire department. How labor-intensive would those grants be outside of having those directly written by a grant writer? And have you successfully been awarded those grants without the assistance of a direct writer?
So we kind of started this team, we kind of just took over when Nosreni Strategies broke off. So I don't have a lot of experience with that. Moving forward, I've been reporting on the Burn Justice one, and then I have the quarterly one to report. I have the actual application, so moving forward to continue that one. I have all the details to do that. The JAG grant that Deputy Chief Wilkie's running on is through the county and the state police. That's like a regular one we get, so we kind of have like a template, it's kind of up and running. And then also the Bullet Fest Program, that's one we've had for probably 10 years. And that's a, there's work to do it, but it's not, that's why we're doing it. Everybody has many hats in our department, we're very efficient that way. And also, these grants would be in addition. There wouldn't be any of those, we'd still have those three. This would be seeking further ones. Like, we're going to be seeking a need for portable radios for both police and fire due to technology advancements. And so that's one that we're really going to be, work really hard on to get Lexipol to help us get through the bigger picture.
Yeah, I used a similar program. This was a few years ago when it was not quite as, you know, technologically advanced. So it was a little bit different. I, obviously, the savings is wonderful. I worry about the manpower that's going to be used. I know the clerk's department writes all of their grants. I'm sure it's very time-consuming. You know, and when we were talking about instances where we have a hard time having enough police officers and firemen to, you know, safely execute their jobs at times, I would really hate for, you know, their talents, though it's necessary to have these grants, I would hate for their talents in grant writing and fire suppression or police activities to be ran over, so to speak, and not be able to execute either one to the best of their ability, especially with burnout. So I mean, you could imagine writing a college paper. If you were up all night servicing the public, and then you had to turn back around and write a grant, may not get your best work, right? So I'm a little concerned about how many man-hours, human-hours, for the women who feel slighted by that. And then if we could get an estimate of what it would cost beyond the three years, I would have to imagine that it kind of, for the three grants per year, I would have to imagine that it's a graduated scale to submit additional or request additional grants to be written by Lexipol and their grant-writing professionals.
Sure, sure, yeah, we could definitely look into that. Also, with the staff level thing, it's, that's why we're keeping it as administrative. We're not having any officers on the road or serges on the road tasking this in addition. This is me, Deputy Chief Wilkie, and Lieutenant Sleep. So it does help, we can always do more. I mean, we are in the office all the time, so we'll be able to do that. I think it'll be pretty efficient. I think this would be good. It's going to be new to us, but I think it's a good, good way to go. And then we can always reevaluate from there, but.
Well, I'm excited to see what a year of it'll look like. I can't commit to that, you know, beyond a year of it being truly a win. That's just having experience in that arena. But, you know, I'm always game to try to save the taxpayers a couple dollars when we can. It's certainly a huge savings. But I don't want that huge savings to be something that, in the end, really, you know, depletes some of the opportunities that we could have if we had a full-time person managing the grant-writing process. So I'll support it today, and we'll see how it goes.
We'll be definitely putting into work, so we'll be on them.
All right, thanks.
Find us some money.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New Business, Item 3. Approval of Site Plan for Proposed Gas Station Addition 37368 Ford Road, northeast corner of Ford and Newburg. This is Planning Department Number 1892B. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, is there support? There is support from Councilwoman Baumann. Now we are on to Director Ayoub.
Okay, thank you. The subject property here is located on the northeast corner of Ford Road in Newburg. It's the Marathon Gas Station over there. The property is currently ZONE CB4, vehicle service. The applicant tonight is requesting site plan approval to construct an 1,100-square-foot addition to the already existing 1,300-square-foot fueling station. This area is to be used for fridges primarily, the display of some convenience store goods for sale. The business owner had approached the city and indicated that this convenience store slash fueling station is struggling for sales. It's one of the smaller stations, convenience stores in the city, and wanted some help in increasing its footprint. There was a discussion, he was adamant that he wanted to go back instead of sideways here where the red area is. Going back would have put him in the easement where the store line exists. So it took us a few months to mutually agree to go east, which causes him some burden in terms of changing his layout on the interior. But ultimately, this is the only way that he could move with the addition. On the west side, there's some underground storage tanks, so he could not move this way. The site access will be maintained. The site's going to exist as it is in terms of the full-service driveways. The two on Newburg will remain, the two on Ford Road will remain. The increase in foot area requires a total of 13 off-street parking spaces. The site will contain 14 off-street parking spaces. The zoning ordinance allows the fueling island parking areas to be counted towards that requirement. The building addition is proposed to use brick and block material that will match exactly what exists there today. The front setback is in compliance. The rear setback, as it exists today, is not in compliance. Therefore, a variance is needed for that. The proposed is 10 feet, 8 inches, and the required is 38. The side yard setback on the west side is 51, so that's in compliance. The side yard setback here on the east is almost zero. It's required to be at 30, so there will be a variance needed there. There are a number of commercial properties, including gas stations, that go all the way up to the property line. It's not uncommon in commercial zoning districts where commercial buildings go up all the way to the side property line. And there is a variance that is needed for the height as well. The Planning Commission and the administration recommend approval of that conditions upon the variance being granted at the Wednesday zoning ordinance meeting. The architect could not be present today, but I know Joe is in the audience today. He's a business owner here in Westland, owns a couple other gas stations and a couple other businesses too. He has to answer any questions on the site plan. Thank you.
Hi, District City Councilor.
Thanks for coming out. Before I turn the council deuce, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I have, like, my name is Joe. I am here to ask for approval to add that addition to my gas station, to add like some coolers. And I have been in business in Westland several years. This is one of my three stations in Westland. Just, I need the help to increase the revenue. The station barely like break even. Yes, I need the help to, to station back to normal because I am like the gas station down the street, the mobile and the Exxon. Always I support these stations. And it's, well, I gotta make it bigger to see what's going to happen in the future, because I'm suffering, barely making payments. That's why.
Okay. Any questions from the maker? Okay, any from the supporter? Yes. Councilwoman Baumann.
I want to clarify a question too. You've indicated through the chair to Director Ayoub that other businesses do go to the property line, and that's not, that doesn't cause any issues, right?
Some, some businesses, some commercial buildings do go up to the property lines, especially on the sides. It's not uncommon, you've probably seen in downtowns for every single building. Not in our downtown, obviously, but other downtowns throughout the region. There are several buildings, commercial buildings in Westland that go up to the side property lines. Additionally, the property on the east was notified along with other property owners within 300 feet of the yellow outline here on the map. There was no one present to continue.
And then, I did see, so I saw some, I saw additional parking spaces that are going to be put in, because it says, it says it already contains 14, but there's, is there three more going in, or they're already there?
There is going to be some rearranging of parking spaces, and we are also requiring him to stripe parking spaces as well and to put up an ADA sign for the single ADA compliant parking space that will be located here on the west side of the building. So the parking lot will change with the addition, and a total of 14 parking spaces will exist after the striking and after the addition.
Okay. And then what is the, I see in the one, it says permitted, the permitted was zero feet in height. What was, what did that mean?
Okay, so the zoning ordinance, as written today, the new zoning ordinance becomes effective on January 1st that you adopted a couple months ago. But currently today, the height in the CB4 zoning district is allowed to be equal to the distance of the nearest property line. And the nearest property line is that east property line, which is almost zero, so.
I get that, okay. And then is there any improvements going to, any landscaping or any of the, I don't know if that's to Mo or to... I don't know if that's to Moe or to the owner, any landscaping or other improvements to the building at all?
Oh, not, not that I recall off the site plan. I know that the striping will be a big improvement, the rearranging of the parking areas. There will be some, can you speak on the landscaping? I'm not sure that there will be any landscaping. You could say no if there is, please elaborate. But I don't remember seeing it in the site plan.
I worry that I have like good landscape in there. I mean, after renovation, the, the building, we're gonna do like good landscape outside for sure.
I will share with you. It's one of the ones I frequent often. I was just there today. Because it just, for whatever reason, it's the one I get to when I go west. So just so you know, it's actually one I do frequent as often as I can, so. But that's why I asked some of the questions. I'm like, okay, what's it gonna look like? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our second Councilwoman.
Thank you. Oh, sir, don't go too far away.
Nope, we still need you here. We got some more.
Thank you. Yes, I thought.
We got a few more questions for you.
Yes, no problem. Mostly comments really. So first was my colleague, Councilwoman Baumann, addressed Moe Ayoub with pretty much my concerns too, was running it right to the property line, which is a little concerning. And I says, well, who owns that property? And I was gonna be wondering if it was you, and it's not you. So again, through the chair to, to Director Ayoub. So you reached out to that property owner to the east and they didn't have a problem or they didn't respond?
They did not respond. So what happened is I did not personally reach out. State law requires three-hundred-foot notice, which you, which you know. And this person did not show up to the planning commission meeting, is not here, and he has an opportunity, he or she has an opportunity to come to the zoning board meeting on Wednesday, which was also publicly noticed in the same way.
But just so I'm certain, the property owner of record was sent a letter?
The property owner of record and whoever pays the tax bill.
Were sent a letter?
Were sent a postcard, yes.
All right. Well, and you answered another question because I, I know in, you know, downtown environments, it's very common to have, you know, property lines be adjacent share walls. I was just a little concerned. The second one I had is help me out here because on this east parcel, it, it's a very small parcel. I think most of us are familiar with it. These individual lines, are these, are these showing like sub-parcels or is it, those are all four individual sub-parcels?
Yeah, there's five individual parcels there under common ownership. If, if there was any redevelopment there, we would require that single parcel.
So I'm looking at, the, the parcel immediate to the lea, to the east is like a five-foot wide sub parcel approximately?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not very wide, yeah.
How did that happen?
I, I'm, I'm not sure.
Right, I understand. So we can see why, additionally, why this, this piece of property is very challenged.
Sure.
Okay.
Former bank.
All right. I'm familiar with the gas station as well. I think you're right. A lot of our station owners have been doing a lot of improvement and I think your stations do. So we're happy to have you in here and applying for this. I realize that your parcel is challenged. I do have issues with the parcel to the east and the way it is, the way it is, but that's not your problem. Kind of not your problem. And Director Ayoub kind of explained to me, well, I'm not thrilled about it, but it's not a good enough reason for me to say no. So that's why I'm gonna be supportive of it. I'm happy that you're gonna go ahead and invest. That corner has had a lot of improvement here on the other two corners recently, the gas station to your west and of course, the car wash there in the corner. So it's gonna drive some business to you as well, I think, especially with the remodel. So we, we want you to be successful. We want you to make it look nice and keep improving that corner. It looks good for everybody else. Whatever does happen with your neighbor on the east, I hope it's quiet and hopefully eventually they do something. You know, because I'm a little concerned about that parcel. We'll talk about that later. But I'm rambling on at this point. I'll be supportive. Good luck on, from, that's all, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Horetem?
Thank you. Hi, how are you? Thank you for coming. So I just had a question. I, I'm reading the documentation that was given to us. I'm okay with the addition. It's pretty common that people want to expand and offer service offerings with your fridges. I know that area is a little tight and small, so. I, I, I am looking at this. It looks like, it says proposed building and additional will be constructed primarily using brick and block material. Are you doing any refacing of your current building too or just the additional?
No, all, it's gonna be all the buildings, it's gonna match.
Okay, so it's gonna be perfect.
It's gonna match, it's gonna look nice.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify, to make sure that I was understanding that you're doing a full reface, which is, which is fantastic. Thank you. Well, thank you so much for investing too. I think that corner is starting to get hot and yeah, there's a lot of investment, so. I will be in support of this as well. I just wanted to clarify that this is a full reface.
Thank you so much.
Is there any additional discussion from the council? I just want to say, sir, thank you for your investment and continued support of our community here as a business owner. We very much appreciate that and appreciate the investment there. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right, well, we will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped. Once it is started, the clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Public comment. Is there anyone on my left? Mr. Warren.
Well, good evening again. As you know, we're winding down a year and I'm just gonna get this out front. Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year. I serve on a number of commissions and committees. And over the past, particularly with the liberator group, we've been building homes. And with the community development block grant fund, we've been in conjunction with the William D. Ford School in building homes. But as long as I've been there, we've never built one for the disabled. And that's one of the recommendations I'm gonna be pushing through my commission, that we build one and see what the feasibility is. See what the feasibility and sellability is. And I think you might like that, Ray. So I, I would, I would like your support and as we move forward through the next year and try to push this idea through because it enters into diversity, equity and inclusion, community growth, a lot of things. But it's one thing that we've left out in that particular aspect in building all these homes around. And they're nice places. We've never considered the disabled or whatever title is on that so that we could include them within this community. And so that's one of the things I'll be pushing for in the new year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone on my right? Public comment. Yes, Ray.
I agree with Warren one hundred percent. That means to me diversity and inclusion means all. Everyone should be. You know, you mean people with disabilities and, and while we're talking about that for a second, I just got a letter from the mayor and I'm renewed again for the disability acquisition group. I'm so happy. I put a lot of work into it. I'm gonna keep driving it and making sure that people, even in the community, businesses, with art or stock, you know, we need to have things like that so people feel like they're inclusive. Because years ago, it wasn't like that. There was no diversity, no, it was like segregation. We're gonna pull away from that. And my goal is, as the chair, is gonna work with my members and we're gonna continue driving it, not just in here at City Hall. We're gonna be in the community too. And I'm always out in the community too and support police officers, businesses, fire department, and you know, and I want to talk about a couple of good things, the events I went to. I went to the, matter of fact, on Thanksgiving, day after Thanksgiving. Melissa, you was there too at that event for the Toys R for the Goodfellas. I enjoyed it. And you know what? Saturday was that festival. Well, you think people think I can walk and dance? Well, I'll tell you, I rocked the house that day, boy. It was packed in there. They had dancing, they had music at this church and I really, seeing the community officers and the, it's kinda nice to have everyone and it feels, you know, I feel more inclusive now than I ever did. And I wanted to share that with y'all. And I want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Public comment. Yes, Mr. Statia.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, City Council members, police and fire chiefs respectively. Dan Statia, Westland, Michigan. This evening I'd like to talk about something that's near and dear to my heart. The Center for Performing Arts, AKA Inspired Theater. I did some research because Deanna and I and a group of us, usually ten or twelve or more, go to every play. We make sure that we spend money here within the city with the restaurants that we frequent and bring that group with us. I did look at TripAdvisor and you know what the number one attraction in the city is? According to TripAdvisor? Anybody? TripAdvisor says it's the Inspired Theater. Number two attraction within the city, Westland Village. I was just wondering, when's the last time we've appropriated money for any of these facilities to improve them in any way, shape or form? I know the Inspired Theater needs some help. And I'm sure that the historic village can use any funds that we could possibly get. Any types of grants or anything out there would be greatly appreciated. Also, I'd like to wish everybody on the council, everybody that's viewing this evening, have a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and take it easy on the roads because the police will be looking for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Public comment? Anyone else in the audience? Public comment? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on now to comments from the administration. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, and I hope everyone had a good, good weekend. This is the last city council meeting of 2024 and I'd like to thank all of the city employees for their hard work during this year. And I'd also like to thank anyone who attended, planned, sponsored or participated in all of the great events that we've had throughout this year. So again, thank you to, to everyone that's had a part in making Westland a special place that we all live and work in. The mayor spent this morning on Fox Two News for a cooking segment with Kung Fu Brothers as part of our shop and dine Westland holiday campaign. During the holiday season, please remember to shop local and support our local businesses. The Westland firefighters will be holding a ceremony on Wednesday, December 18th, at Fire Station One at 4:00 PM, where they'll be unveiling an honor wall for retirees. Again, that's this Wednesday at four o'clock at Station One. Our holiday decorating contest is in full swing and runs through December 31st. Residents can nominate themselves or any resident. First place winner, there'd be first place winners in the following categories. Most original, simple yet elegant, and most over the top. And those first place winners will be recognized at the council meeting on January 21st. The Mike Madonna Weiss Arena, and I'm surprised our Parks and Rec director didn't mention this, has special holiday break for open skating during the, the two weeks that school is not in session for the holidays. Please visit the city website for a list of dates and times. I'd like to congratulate Judge Sandra Ferencisarelli on her retirement and thank her for her service. I had the honor of serving with the, the judge when she was on city council as well as when she was the mayor. And her service is, is, she's the only individual that served all three branches of government here in the city of Westland, so. In addition, I'd like to wish her a happy birthday. And I'd also like to congratulate Judge-elect Mike McNamara, who will be sworn in on January 1st. You know, our, our crews and DPS don't get a lot of recognition. They do a tremendous amount of work, but they, they also are, are improving their skill set. And I, I'd like to congratulate, we've had seven employees that just recently, from our Department of Public Service, received their drinking water operator certification from the state of Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. These, these individuals took the initiative, studied hard and some of the, there's four levels of this certification. It goes from, it starts at S4 and goes up to an S1. And several of these individuals tested for both level three and four and completed both of those successfully. So again, congratulations to those employees. And then I just hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season and Merry Christmas. Celebrate the holidays in whichever customs and fashions that you, you believe in. And I look forward to an exciting 2025. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any comments from the city attorney's office this evening?
Just a few tonight. I was going to comment about Judge Sisarelli's retirement as of January 1st, noon on January 1st. I saw her the other day. She said, "I'll be reviewing warrants right up till noon on January 1st, so don't get in trouble." I also am directed by Mike McNamara to send his regards. He's enjoyed working with council over the decades, actually. He's been my affiliate with my firm for 20 years and is going to the bench and looking forward to serving the residents of Westland in that regards. I, I wanna piggyback on the certification. There was a point in time, two, I think, two administrations ago, when Westland had no S1 certifications and we had to, we were, we had to cut a deal with Canton, I believe it was, to use their S1 certification to meet our state requirements. So kudos to DPS for upgrading their skill set and moving that, that along. ESCOT was back on the calendar here. Thank you for approving that. I'm a big fan of the formerly Norwayne Boxing Club, now the ESCOT, which stands for Emmanuel Stewart Champions of Tomorrow Youth Development Program. Jeff Stires and his team down there does a great job. If you can support them on January 25th for their fundraiser, I think that'd be really helpful. What they do for the youth down there is tremendous. And, and the one thing they're not, in my view, they're not very good at is self-marketing, to come here and do a nice video and do 10 minutes of showing you what they do on video. I suggest they do that, but if you can support them, that'd be great. And finally, Happy Holidays to everybody in Westland.
Okay. We will now begin council comments this evening with comments from Councilman Hornbuckle. Yes, sir.
All right, we already praised Goodfellas, but I'm gonna praise them again because 400 kids, 400-plus kids, I don't care about the dollar amount, but 400 kids this year are going to be so excited, so amazed. When I hear this, I just think about my son when he looks at me with his little bright eyes. Like, that's amazing. So to the Goodfellas for your work, for helping them get to that, to that spot. Congratulations. That's, that's amazing. So thank you for that. And also want to tell everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years and I'll see you next year. Thank you.
Okay. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Melissa, and the rest of the board of the Goodfellows. I'm gonna try not to get all emotional, but here I am. I'm already crying. It just speaks volumes about how special Westland is. At the end of the day, we have our ups and we have our downs and, you know, it's, knowing that 400 children will get to experience what, you know, just the simple, the childhood joy. joy of what Christmas is, and to have been a tiny little speck a part of that in their lives is, well, that's, you know, that's a good Christmas gift for all of us to have received. So, you know, thank you to everybody who was involved in that. Mr. Statchow, the village was allocated ARPA funds. I believe we, they were allocated funds, and correct me, Council President, if I'm incorrect, for the parking lot and something else?
I believe we still have the vote on the parking lot one, but we are looking as the subcommittee's recommendation was to allocate.
I know that both of those entities have been discussed at great length, and, you know, the direct allocation has, you know, well, geez, we're at the last hour, but the funds remain usable. So they're still discussion and an opportunity to be found. I took a quick trip to the park, and I sent council an email, and I was a little disappointed to see that all of the, the construction fencing around the rehabbed pond is essentially decimated. I know we've had a lot of wind. I think we could, you know, maybe get some higher-grade fencing, but it looked very dangerous, especially with the heat and freezing that we've had. I didn't see any signs visible from the parking lot to prevent anybody from going into the pond. It just, it didn't look great, and I had a concern, especially with, you know, that park being under Eagle oversight and last year having remediation conditions brought to the city for the soccer goal boxes because of the exposed soil, that I would assume that there would be the same kind of conditions brought forward without, you know, that pond, even though, you know, hopefully we'll get it to really, really freeze. But that pond is not potable, and it is not safe for people to enter. And the fencing that's up there right now is just in such disarray, and it really needs some attention, and I'm really worried, you know, that somebody's going to get hurt, you know? And it's, without seeing any signs from the parking lot, you know, you could just run right into that pond thinking like, you're going to go ice skating and you're going to have a whole nother adventure. Thank goodness we have policemen and firefighters. I just wanted to thank all of our city employees. I wanted to thank all of our teachers and education staff in our school district and all of the residents of the city and all of those who visit us regularly and maybe call Westland home on a part-time basis. That, you know, it's just, all of those people make our city such a fabulous and wonderful place, and it's just, at this time of year, you kind of just get to reflect on everybody's contribution and what they bring to the place that you call home. When you're thanking people, I'm sorry. Last but not least, I would just like to thank my family. I'm sorry. It's been a trying year, and I just hope that for all of us, 2025 is going to be a better one. So I wish all of you that same opportunity. But before I close and extend my, look at that, look at that gentleman sitting next to me. Thank you, clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay. Today, I got noticed that I lost a little bit of a hero. And this time of year is just hard. So I just wanted to extend my condolences to the family of Virginia Williams. She was a powerhouse of a woman, and, you know, I was lucky enough when I decided that I'll give the city council thing a shot, you know, to have her as a mentor and to really have a wonderful friend and a wonderful leader as a friend. And she didn't necessarily serve just, you know, our community. She was a city councilwoman for the city of Romulus, but I think what the most important thing that she taught me, and I think she taught many of us, was that when you take on this role, that you take on the role of being a servant, this is servant leadership, and that you are serving your community, you're serving the people who have entrusted you with this responsibility. And she's going to be dearly missed, dearly, dearly missed. And I just want to send my love to her husband and children, and I know the holidays aren't going to be the same for them either, but that being said, I wish you joy and peace. I wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Diwali, because even though that's passed, it's usually part of the celebration. Whatever it is that you may celebrate, I hope you do so joyfully. I hope you do that surrounded by the people you love. And I hope that the upcoming year, gosh, oh, son of a gun, I'll tell ya, I hope the upcoming year for all of us is just one that gives us renewed hope and a reason to celebrate instead of cry at meeting. Forgive me for being a softie. Most people don't really know that I'm as sensitive as I truly, truly am, so the mask comes off. But that, I wish you a good evening, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year's. When I shout at my wife, that is one week away from giving her, tomorrow actually is our due date, so looking forward to that. I'm sure I will also be doing some crying in the next few weeks from staying up in the middle of the night. Thank you, Hope, for powering through this, and looking forward to the journey of being a parent with you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. I'm going to actually just share the sentiments with the Westland Goodfellas because obviously they've done an amazing job for families around the holidays, but I also appreciate hearing more about some of even the help that they do with emergencies and with food all year round. So it's not something that's just for the holidays, and I just, it's just really neat to hear how organizations like Westland Goodfellas do take care of the families around Westland that need a little more than some. So I want to thank Councilman Sampe for stepping in and all the board members that have been putting years of their, years of their own service into doing that. I also love Inspired Theater. I actually did just get to see their Home for the Holidays show, and unfortunately, I think it's sold out, so I don't, you know, I don't know that there's any tickets available for that, but they're going to be having another one, and I definitely would love to see more support go for them in the new year, and I, you know, I think, I think we will. I think we're going to see some more arts and things in our community as well. I do want to thank the residents for putting me in this position. I just, I'm at the end of my first full year as an elected councilwoman, and I truly have appreciated this opportunity. I, again, I, you know, when you step in for the first time is every one of us has, you know, when you first get elected and you're running and you get excited through that process, and then you get elected, you're like, okay. And so I really appreciate, you know, any ups and downs I may have had even this year, and just I hope I can serve as well, or better, actually. It's, I'm a believer of better every day, so if yesterday wasn't as good as you wanted it, well, you've got another day to make it better, or if today wasn't as good, so yeah, so better every day, better 2025. So with that, I will wish Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, and yes, we will see you in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Well, it's always tough to follow all that, so I'll just be brief. To the Goodfellas and Pro Tem Sampe, thanks for what you do. I'm a big volunteerism person too, but also, you know, as a child, I was a beneficiary of the Goodfellas program, so I know how important it is, and I know how important the work you do is. And the good news is, when I was a kid, I didn't even know what the Goodfellas were, but they knew who I was. So that was important. So thank you for what you do. It's well-received, and sometimes it's thankless, but you know exactly what you're doing, and as me at 47 years old, I'll tell you thank you now because I couldn't tell them thank you then. So thank you for what you did for me and what you do for those kids. Beyond that, everybody nailed everything else, so I don't want to beleaguer you too much. I'll just say Happy Holidays, so that's Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, and Happy Festivus for the rest of us. Thank you very much.
In the tradition of Mike Care, Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. Happy Holidays, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good holiday season. I know there's been a lot of events here in the city of Westland, so I'll just kind of share a few of them in my sentiments, but I want to thank our police department, our firefighters for keeping us safe. They don't get holidays off, so you guys are working, unfortunately, in the cold and, you know, times that you probably want to be with your family, so thank you. I'm looking to you guys over here. We really appreciate everything that you do to keep us safe. Our DPS employees who often are working in the cold, I know it's been mentioned, but several of them had certifications, and I really appreciate the continuing education and learning and just making Westland better. Our clerks' office that worked their tails off this year, actually the last, what, 18 months, if I'm not mistaken? So want to thank you for just everything that you guys did to run our elections. Our city employees, everyone in city council for just working really hard, our teachers, board members, and volunteers. I think it's been mentioned, but it takes everyone to make the city a better place to live and to have events and just be involved in the community, so I want to thank you all. I wanted to wish Happy Birthday to Judge Sandra Sisorelli. Hopefully she does watch this back. Congratulations to her for her years of service and to her newly-elected, I'm sorry, appointed, right, Judge?
Judge-elect McNamara.
Oh, I'm sorry, he is, yes. Yes, he was on my ballot. I'm like, let me figure that, yes. He was on a post, yes. Judge McNamara for his new role. And thank you, Mr. Warren, for bringing up about the disabled home building. I think that's a fantastic idea, and I know Ray agrees to. I would love to see that come to fruition. Congratulations, Ray, on your renewal, and I know that you're going to continue to do great things in the community. Wanted to congratulate everyone at the Westland Historic Village Park. I had a chance to stop over there, and I want to thank, I know Sharon's in the audience, and John's in the audience, and Derek's in the audience, so I want to just congratulate you guys. It was a really good event. I was able to stop by in the morning and bring my grandson, and was kind of trying to teach him how to color, but it was a great time, and I know you guys put in a lot of time and effort. I'm sorry I missed the evening event, I was kind of bouncing around, but the morning event was great, so I wanted to congratulate you guys on that. Also wanted to congratulate Beth Welcomebox, so she just had her annual Christmas party at the Friendship Center. It was her first one. Anyone that attended, she did such a great job. I mean, it was such a fantastic packed house. The food was fantastic. I know we had local dignitaries and elected officials and city directors. It was a great time. I really wanted to congratulate her because she put a lot of time and energy in that, and I know she was really nervous too, but she did a fantastic job, just like she did over in Thanksgiving time as well. Also wanted to congratulate the DEI Department, everyone that worked really closely with Pastor Duckworth on the Desemany Missionary Baptist Church, the Community Festival. I was able to stop by. It was a really great time. It was so hot in there. There were so many people, but we had a great time. And Ray, I saw your videos, and you were, you were hit with the dancing too. He really did. He was teaching everyone dances, but it was, it was a fantastic way to network and meet people, and I had, I had a great time. Yes, I know you did. So just recapping with Westland Goodfellas, I know I talked about it a lot, but I really wanted to thank the sponsors that couldn't be here. So we had over 23 sponsors, over 140 people that donated either on our PayPal or wrote checks, and it was such, it was such a community effort, so I wanted to thank them for just being involved. The Westland Goodfellas has been around for 60 years. We, as an organization, do a lot of emergency visits to families, so they come to Jefferson Barnes, they are able to pick out toys. These are individuals, I had a mom that came, and her home had asbestos, and, you know, I can't imagine, you know, right before Christmas time and having to throw everything out, and it's just the situations that you're faced with, and I really, you know, you kind of lost for words. You know, there's a lot in the community that needs help and assistance, and it takes all of us as a village to serve our community. So again, I wanted to thank everyone that sponsored, everyone that volunteered. We have close to 60 volunteers on Packing and Distribution Day, and we really are trying to continue out serving throughout the whole year. It really came down to funding and volunteerism, so that group that I honored here today, it was, it was five people that ran the organization basically for like 16 years, and they were really burnt out. This year is going to be their last year if they didn't have, you know, new energy, so I was really happy to step up and be a part of it. But mainly, I'm just using this as a call, as anyone that wants to help will take your support, will take your help and assistance. You don't have to be a Westland resident, but we just want to continue to be able to serve. So in 2025, we're working with the Community, Westland Community Partnership. We're going to have a golf outing, so Christmas in July Golf Outing. I know that we're working on that. There's some other fun golf-related stuff and some other fundraisers to continue, continue on and not have to be limited. So a lot of the resources and help that Goodfellas provides are people that didn't have food in their pantry, and for us to be able to give them a food voucher for either $70 or $140 at Heartland Market, they were just in tears. I mean, a lot of them were pretty much stunned, so pickup was very emotional. It was very humbling as well, but it takes all of us to make our community better. So I just want to thank everyone involved, and thank you again to my colleagues for just supporting the funding to keep things going. It really kicked us off. One more thing that I wanted to just recap is, we have a partnership with Living and Learning Enrichment Center. So far, things have been going excellent. I know this was something that I came to Mayor Coleman about, and they are helping out at the Senior Resource Center, so I'm just going to read something from John Page, who is our point of contact at Living and Learning Enrichment Center. So what he states is, "Helping out at the Senior Resource Center has been absolutely wonderful so far. Beth and Matt over there have been so kind and welcoming to our members. It's a great chance for our groups to interact with community while they work on job skills in a safe and caring environment. I know that we have some members who are very much looking forward to spring so they can help out on any outdoor beautification projects again. The time spent at City Hall has been very beneficial. A more private setting that is where it's just to coach members focusing on preparing and maintaining a space, which creates a lot of opportunity for coach to provide more in-depth attention to our members without the hustle and bustle around as a distraction. The members have been really getting the kick out of having a VIP access to the council chambers for their visits, and you all have been so helpful in facilitating this. The Mike Madonna Ice Arena is going smoothly. One of our members have been asking when he gets to drive the Zamboni. I don't know if that's going to happen, but I don't think we're quite there yet. I did work at the Allen Park Ice Arena as my first job, so it's been very cool to see our members learning some new tasks and I was responsible for in my early teens. Our shifts lining up the hockey on occasion is definitely a nice bonus as well. Thanks to Joe over there for making the switch from the golf course. It's been an easy one for everyone. We're very excited for what the new year will bring, and we hope to continue growing and learning with the caring and kindness of people like you, Councilwoman Sampe, and everyone at your facility who has taken such proactive approach to making this happen. Thank you so much." So that's from John Page over at Living and Learning. So it's our developmental individuals that need the assistance and need the coaching, and I really wanted to thank the city for allowing this to happen because I know this has been life-changing for them. So with that being said, I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I hope you're safe in your travels. I hope that everyone has a fantastic holiday season, and I really look forward to 2025. So we'll see you on Monday, January 6th, and until then, be safe and kind with each other and enjoy your holiday season.
Thank you, Pro Tem. First off, I too would like to thank Thank you, Pro Tem. First off, I too would like to thank the outgoing Judge, Mayor, City Councilwoman Sandra Ferran Cicirelli. Judge Cicirelli has worn every hat in the city, as Deputy Mayor God about mentioned. And I want to thank her for her long and outstanding service as a public servant. Not just, anyone can be an elected official, but Judge Cicirelli truly defined what it meant to be a public servant in the community and thank her for her many years of service and dedication to improving people's quality of life and the work she did here in the community. So thank you, Judge Cicirelli. We greatly appreciate your service here to the city of Westland. And we know that, you know, many residents do as well. So thank you for that. I want to thank all of our city employees, as was mentioned here as well. Everybody who puts on a uniform and comes to work here each and every day, our police officers who put the badge on and go out in the street and risk their lives and sacrifice, our firefighters who are out there busier than ever, making more runs than ever this year. I think we're over, what, 16,000 runs or so this year for 2024, one of their busiest years yet. And it's still growing for both departments. I think the PD could, could tell you the same. So thank you to their hard work, sacrifice, and dedication to our DPS employees. Everybody here at City Hall as well. A lot of the folks that you may see when you come up to the desk at City Hall, but hundreds of people that you don't see that are working behind the scenes to make this city operate. So, you know, while you see us and the mayor's office as the face of the city, it's really the dedicated men and women behind the scenes. There are folks that you may see only when you call emergency services or when your water main breaks out there. You may only see them once in a while. So thank you to all of our city employees for your incredible dedication and the tireless work that you do all year round. It was brought up in regards to the Historic Village Park, also in regards to some arts and culture here in the city. I think we'll have some exciting allocations, hopefully, in the first of the year at the next council meeting with regards to some of that stuff. So I will say, stay tuned on that. I too had the chance to attend a couple of great events this weekend. First, I want to thank our state representative Dylan Wiegela for putting on a good meeting and a great constructive dialogue with our Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson. It was great to attend that at, it was outside of Westland, but it was at Pastor Horn's Church in Garden City. It was great to talk to our Secretary of State about issues that are going on here in the city of Westland and what we can do to collaborate with state government to improve some of those things and really lift people up and make sure that we're taking care of their basic needs, helping out marginalized communities, and improving people's quality of life. So thank you to Representative Wiegela for organizing that and to Secretary of State Benson for coming through and being willing to meet with local community leaders. I know that our president of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association, also our Democratic Club president, Arthur Warren, was there as well as some other community leaders from the local area. So thank you, Representative Wiegela and Secretary of State Benson for that. The other event I had the opportunity to attend later in the day was at our Westland Historic Village Park. So I want to thank everybody on the commission and everybody that volunteered, folks who weren't on the commission, for two great events that were put on there. I wasn't able to get to event number one in the morning, but I had the chance to attend the Holiday Night at the Village event there this Saturday. I want to thank Santa Claus for stopping on by. And again, everybody who put on a really tremendous event. There was, the whole Village Park was, you know, lit up with Christmas decorations. You could go in and tour all the houses there at the park. Kids had the opportunity to see Santa and tell him what they wanted and sit on his lap. And there was hot cocoa, arts and crafts, cookies to eat. So it was a really great event. They put on great events at the Historic Village Park year-round. So this was just one of many great events that was there. So thank you guys for everything you did there. I would like to thank our Rotary Club here in Westland and also the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce for another tremendous Taste Fest event. I saw many colleagues on council that were at the event. So thank you for another terrific Taste Fest event. Always one of my favorite events as someone who likes to cook. Always a favorite event of mine. As the deputy mayor mentioned and as some of my colleagues mentioned, when you're wrapping up your Christmas shopping this year and you're looking for that special gift for someone on your list, don't forget to shop and dine right here in the city of Westland. We really do have a lot of unique gifts, a lot of unique shops, excuse me, all across the city. Everything from, you know, great vinyl records to buy the music lover on your list, skateboards, to cool stuff over at the mall. So make sure to shop and support local businesses when you're looking for Christmas gifts and stocking stuffers. And also make sure if you're running around and you're a little parched and famished and hungry, stop at one of the dozens and dozens of great restaurants that we have here all across the city and support local businesses. I want to also remind folks that, Councilman Hart brought this up, but in addition to having a Merry Christmas, having a Happy Hanukkah, having a Happy Kwanzaa and whatever you celebrate, to enjoy the Festivus holiday as well. I too celebrate the Festivus holiday along with former Councilman Care, Councilman Hart. I will be doing my annual airing of the grievances on my council page at Councilman Mike McDermott. As Frank Costanza would say, "I've got a lot of problems with you people and now you're gonna hear it." And so I do my annual airing of the grievances there on my council page. Just two other things that I wanted to make note of really quick before I wrap up my closing statements here. Our Wayne Westland teachers are working really hard. And you may have driven down our cat to see them out there. We want to support our teachers and we want to make sure that they have, you know, great pay, great benefits, are treated fairly. It's been, you know, if you've followed what's going on with the school board this year and some of the stuff that's had us in the news, it's been a tough year for students, for parents, and also for our staff and our teachers. So we want to thank them for all that they do in the community. Our teachers over at Wayne Westland Schools, our Livonia School teachers, and the staff over at Wayne Westland in Livonia Schools. It's, you know, not always easy and I think this year was harder than most. So thank you to all of our teachers and staff here in Wayne Westland and also in Livonia for all that you do. And then, you know, I mentioned this a couple of council meetings back. This time of year can be tough for anyone. Tough for people who don't have a close network of family and friends to rely on and maybe they're lonely, or tough for people who do have that network of family and friends to rely on. And it can especially be tough on people's emotional, emotional and mental health. So if you know someone who's struggling at this time of year, there are great compassionate, kind people out there who are willing to help and that know that you are not alone. There's the new mental health resource that I know Ray always promotes, the 988 number. Thank you, Ray. Yep, it's the 988 number. So as opposed to just having to call emergency services when you're experiencing a brain health issue or a mental health crisis, you can call 988. And right here in Wayne County too, we have the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, D-Win, that you can call at 313-833-2500. Again, 313-833-2500. There are resources here in Wayne County and across the state to help. Lord knows, we need to do a better job with mental health here in the state. The community mental health model has, in my book, a lot of flaws and a lot of failures. And there's a lot of reform and change that needs to be taking place. I think that many of us here in the council and many in the community have a horror story to tell with community mental health and that we need more options for people who are in need and need a little mental and emotional support this time of year and all year round. So remember that you are not alone. You can call 988, you can call D-Win, and there are great people that will help you. Last but not least, I want to thank everybody that I serve with here on the council and thank the mayor's administration. It's certainly been a year with lots of ups and some downs, moments and times where we haven't always agreed on things and situations that have made us downright angry and frustrated. And that happens in government because we all come with ideas and perspectives that are different from one another. And there are decisions made sometimes that we collectively don't agree with or individually don't agree with or do agree with. But I just feel fortunate and lucky to serve with a great group of people who bring new ideas and new initiatives to the table each and every week that aren't just here to show up at a meeting and go home, but have something more to offer. And that's the great thing about a democratic system here. Don't always have to agree on every single thing, but if we can keep it professional and always work to, you know, move the people's voices forward and do things that improve people's quality of life, take care of marginalized communities, lift people up during their time of need, I think that's what can really make a community great. And when we do more than just talk, when we take the time to listen to all of our residents who put us in these positions, who we are grateful for for putting us here and who we owe a debt of gratitude for putting us here in the first place. Whether those residents voted for us or not, or whether they voted or not at all in an election, it is important to know that, you know, we serve the residents and who we work with. But I want to thank each of my colleagues here for your service and dedication this year to the work that you do here on council and to the residents that you serve in the community. And thank the mayor's office as well for everything that they do. So with that, thank you. And I will close by saying, as I mentioned previously, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Festivus, whatever you celebrate. I hope that you have a loving network of family and friends around to celebrate it with. Please be kind, please be respectful. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?